The following program is made possible by First State Bank. Offering secure online and mobile banking, First State Bank is ready to serve your financial needs with locations in Warren, Hermitage, and Hampton. First State Bank, the difference is leadership. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
Member Burke Frazier's, Burke Frazier this afternoon. Think her mother has had a fall and then there was a, also Mr. Joe Inbrant I believe has had some serious issues and they're very close to her and so she's tied up tending to sick folks as well as the mouse do. And then I think Latanza had already told us she had to be out of town on business or work, so she should simply be here tonight. But we will proceed with our forum. And the first thing we have is item four on your agenda would be the approval of the minutes of June the 12th, 2023.
I move that the minutes for June 12th be received as emailed and archived and given to us.
All right. Okay, Alderman Mosley, I think you got that idea. So you've got a motion, I have a second, that the minutes be approved as submitted. Question, discussion, any correction to any of the minutes? Not all in favor, please show hands. I see four in favor. That is sufficient, minutes are approved. Ask our city clerk if she would go over the finances very briefly, please.
For the administrative, the expenses were $235,523.75. Law enforcement, the expenses were $761,250.75. For fire was $227,61.71.
Seventy-four, didn't you? Seventy-four?
Yes. Then for sanitation was $535,210.53. District court was $43,751.27. Municipal building was $17,222.53. Recreation was $109,819.20. Cultural center was $4,561.82. Armory was $13,931.30. Shooting range was $24,582.30. Senior citizens center was $4,085.80. Other was $3,085.42. Airports was $18,020.20. Street was $296,33.57.
I think if we skipped the building code...
Well, ours was not in the order that she was giving, so we just kept...
Well, the building, I thought my, the building code was in there and we, anyway, it was $13,878.03.
It's there, but it's just, yeah, it was in the order.
Just again, before council, y'all certainly look at over, got any questions or anything, but what the numbers that she gave you are year-to-date numbers. If you look at the first column, you'd see the month of June. She should read off to you the year-to-date numbers, so make sure everybody realizes that. Open for motion?
I move that the statement of revenue and expenditures be approved as presented by the city clerk. She really just said that expenditures and not the revenues.
That's correct. You gave expenditures, that's what we normally do. Certainly it's there for you to look at the revenues as well. Got a second, motion and second to approve. Is there any question, any discussion about the finances? Anybody got anything they want to ask or comment about? All those in favor of approval, show of hands, please. I see four in favor and you also noticed that right behind that financial report is your cash balances, which show what you've got in every account right now.
Maybe next month if I was to be in the same order as hers. I don't know how I got out of the order.
Yes, they need to be in the same order, yes. But you've got every one of them.
Yes, we have.
Okay.
We kept flipping to catch up.
Go ahead, on the...
City sales tax for this month was $88,938.38. And for the county sales tax for this month was $16,934.37.
And I know it was mentioned in the past that we've been putting, that she's been writing down there, the percentage is up and down on the year based on the previous year, but you can also see we've got some months that it's up. As a matter of fact, June revenue for the city sales tax was a couple thousand dollars above what it was for the same time last year, but for the year, we are down, let's see, for the city it's four percent and for the county it's two percent. So just for y'all's information, but we're hanging in there pretty good on that. Go ahead. Court. They got the court?
Yes, they got it.
Y'all got any questions on anything there? We'll be glad to try to get it for you. And then you should have an overtime report. This is for April 1st through June 3rd. Thought you got any questions, it's just there for your information, so you can see how our overtime by department's running. Okay? We'll move to item six, the mayor's report. We're going to pass on item one with council member memberie Burke Frazier had a recommendation on that. She's not here and that's still being looked into, so we're just going to pass on that. We will have to fill that vacancy in the future. And then you've also got the next item. I'm sure I've got my stuff in right over here. You should have a...
Street closure.
Street closure matter on 713 George Street. Is Ms. Alexander here? Okay, I thought this is the lady that, you've got an email, copy of an email of what you got. And she's wishing, you can read it there, she's wishing to close down a portion of George Street located in front of her house for basically a block party type of activity as I understand. We certainly have no objections to it or anything, but I...
Question.
Yes, sir.
Is that going to include Butler?
Only thing she says is George.
Because he comes to a T right there, right there at her house, and I was just wondering what that...
Notice, the only request we got from her is just George Street.
Don't our chief say that there would be a problem with it?
Chief Hildreth, could you step in here a minute? We've got a request for a block party type activity. Do you know of any issues that would cause?
I don't know if we'd close the street, but traffic damage would be a burden.
Yeah.
We should have that.
Yeah. She's got a time period there on everything, so when she would do it, it would not be...
Look to that pro.
Got a motion and I think Alderman, toll free, you second it up. Motion's made, you second to authorize the closure as it's spelled out there. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, show of hands. I see four in favor. Okay, civil service report and I think we need to have an executive session for that.
Move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, show of hands. And we, everybody else can stay put, city council's gonna step upstairs for a minute and hopefully not get too long and get back.
Mayor, do you want to use the conference room?
No ma'am, no ma'am, we don't need it. Thank you.
Okay.
Y'all can ride up, start getting ready. Alderman, ride up here, we got a... Action of any kind taken by the council or to be taken. So we will move along. Public comments, we don't have any boundaries. Anybody signed in to speak? I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege from the bench. Does AFHP want to make any comments? We're glad to have y'all here today, tonight.
No, don't really want to make any comments.
Introduce yourself anyway.
I'm Steve Mahanes, plant manager out of A K F Products, the old Armstrong facility. Now, just come to listen, see what, see what all is going on, working with the mayor on a thing or two for the community, but to do everything we can.
We appreciate you.
Thank you all.
We've had several meetings with them, they're just telling the truth, they're trying to help us some with the city park on Barton Street with some contributions of labor and money and things they're working with us on down there. For instance, we're, gotta replace that bridge down there with the creek and some other things, so just thank y'all for everything, we appreciate it. Of course, I've already told them this, I'm gonna say it publicly, we're glad they're in Warren, Arkansas, that facility out there, I think y'all work about 170 people or so out there and that's a, that's a, that's a major thing for us and we're very grateful to have you here and all you do for the city. Okay, is that all Charlotte?
Yes.
Okay. Administrative standing committee reports, item eight, Chief Hildreth. They have your report.
Yes, sir.
Evening.
Evening. We've got a month before in front of you, making pretty much spells out our activities for the past month, it's been pretty much been as usual. Again, if you're looking to, we see we got three full-time officers for sure, but like I say, we're not as private as we seem because we are, we have two part-time individuals that will supervise, we have two part-time individuals that support, three full-time employees.
Yeah, and who are these?
Yes, they'll be on, one, Billy Reddy and also Mr. John Brown. I think everybody familiar with Mr. Reddy, because he was, he's stayed with the community, he's been here for a while ago.
And been a police officer, and was a former police officer.
And a former police too.
Yes, yes.
Anybody got any questions? Just for the public's information without throwing the meeting out, the chief got him a complete monthly report here. He's got everything from the gasoline usage, you know, for the police cars, to all the arrests that have been made, what category they're in. Looks like we've had about, let's see, we've got a list of all kinds of calls from excessive noise to accidents to alarms going off to family disturbances, all these kind of things are listed here.
And he's most proud of his vehicle repair equipment.
Amazing what two vehicles do for you. But anyway, it's a very detailed report city council gets, it's certainly open to the public. Yes, sir?
Just a comment, I guess, chief more so than anything is because I constantly worry about our youth. Thank you, you being three officers shows the best thing you can do to kind of help the times that you was growing and the dead, he's a summer.
What we've done, we've kind of dispelled up the guy, we've got to just come out all the time before, and we've been using guys a little bit more often, so we just try to keep a, it's a high profile of office patrol that's frequent at that area, that's right. During summertime, there are kids who are playing, having a little more activity during the day, so we just create patrol for the guys we have.
And a lot of that is the pink tomato festival.
Love your opinion, yes, sir. That's a good point.
Why don't you say, I don't want to try to short the safety of the community, but I'll give you support of that.
Any questions for the chief for, I think about the police department? We'll move to the police committee and of course Alderman and Frazier is not here tonight, but just to give y'all, there's three items on the agenda, so if I could, I'll just real quick give this chief, do you need to add anything to do so? The study that the council authorized for the dispatch of operation at commercial service center, you know, what we're doing and some of the other entities that we do a lot of things for, what the cost is and that type of thing, that has been, we've authorized the study to begin. We have, we have a professor at the University of Arkansas at Montcelli in criminal justice that is going to do the study. It's gonna be a relatively quick computerized analysis, he's plugging everything in, saying this is, you're doing this, but you're doing it for, you know, such and such agency and kind of get a percentage on it. We just got that sent off to them and authorized and proceeded, it's going to cost us, I think it found was $375, so it was, it's not going to be a lot, but we'll, hopefully we'll have something that'll give the council a little bit more information. Animal control truck, chief, we're shopping.
Yes, we are shopping, yes, sir.
To try to bring something back to y'all on that, talking about a used vehicle here, but we're shopping on that. And then the post ordinance 949, we hoped we might have that tonight, I don't think we were able to get that, where was Mr. Clayman? Okay. He's got it in his hands, he's trying to get it drafted up, so we'll, we should have something back. This is something the council's already basically approved, but we had to put it in ordinance. Hold on. Anybody got any questions on any of that?
No, the council had approved about $500 for the study, so we were...
Yeah. I offered him less if we split the difference. I negotiated well on this.
We didn't get over at Freehand.
No, I tried that, that didn't work either, so. All right, chief, thank you, unless you got something else? All right, fire chief, they got your, copy of your report and I think they've also got your, the insurance collective, that's the thing that's been asked for and it wasn't only your main report, so that's included. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Warren Fire Department refunded $22 per month to you, and one was coming about to put the entire department, only had one extra team to tell that some of the extrication team, the air labor was low, seven ninety-five, anticipated with the hot bill in their managed program on the 27th, with illegal extrication and animals and police were there, it was not simulated in accident form. We've been keeping the free pile, that appeared Bryant Building, that to be in compliance would be huge, that's part of what we have to do with that, keep everything free. All our trucks were pump tested, three pumpers and a ladder truck, they all passed their annual pump test on June 15th. And on the 22nd, we had all our air tanks tested, two of the older tanks had to be sent back for a amount of repairing before we can get those back.
Questions for the chief? Okay, chief, thank you, I don't think we had any fire...
None at this time.
...for any business, unless something you do, hook Mr. Burke, Mr. Tollfree. Okay, sanitation. Y'all keep it straight, I'm in the right place, aren't on the agenda, sanitation.
Evening.
Good evening.
Give them a little breakdown on what's going on with the cleanup, we got a lot of stuff going, it won't take all night, but give them a...
We sent letters on Central Street, I wouldn't put any names, on Central Street and West Pine, also charity, we've asked for general cleanup on several properties. Ms. Porter that did come into the city council meeting a couple of months ago on the problem that she was having on McCullough, it's all pretty much being taken care of. I talked to her last week on the phone, she was very excited and happy with the way things were going. One of the lots had a big old tree that was falling, they had mowed the lot, got it started on being cleaned up, she was having a little trouble coming up with the money to have the tree removed and Ms. Porter of its understanding and give her a little bit more time. The other properties that she complained about pretty much have been taken care of on New York. Everybody, everybody did a good job. The, the other properties that I mentioned are still under probation period to get the work done, so the 20 days and the 30 days depending on what the offense is.
The council members, you have any particular piece of property you want to ask him about right now? We could, we could stay here most of the night talking about this, Alderman Henderson?
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of Mrs. Wendell and Clark over on Rock and Church Street.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. And also across on Etherick Street from where Mrs. Carolyn McQuist.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
We just sent the letters out, the people are good about taking care of it and we know we'll be more than glad to send a letter out or touch base. We try to touch base with people before sending the letters, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
They have a build, a home that's being built, right?
Yes, ma'am. They've been a pleasure, those people have been a pleasure to work with on their construction too, they, I mean, building him, especially in our...
Mr. Tollfree, you...
I was aware that the property on Blainship Court had changed hands.
Yes, sir.
And I was just wanting for information purposes, because the infrastructure has been burnt, they supposed to have so many days to straighten it out. What about those stretch of houses on North Martin, just before you get to the school?
They also have changed hands, I'm under the understanding, Mr. Tollfree, that three out of the five, I believe, have changed hands to the person that bought the property at Blainship Court. They, they have plans to remodel and upgrade. This is the same gentleman that owns the property at Blainship Court and they, out of the five rental properties on Blainship Court, they've repaired almost two, they've brought them up to code, electrical plumbing wise and building standards, and they're in the process of doing the, doing the others also. It's been, it's been a real positive thing over there in that area, he hadn't been by there in a while, it looks a lot better than it did a year ago.
What about the burnout structure on Martin Green here?
To be honest with you, I haven't, I haven't done anything to, to it. I have, I have discussed with the fire chief within the last two months about getting a list of all the burnt properties and, and sending out letters to try to get them cleaned up. We just, to be honest with you, we just, we haven't got it together yet.
Mr. Tollfree, you make a very valid point about the burned structures, because we've got a number of them around town and, and of course, you know, we try to give people a little bit of time, work things out with their insurance or whatever they got to do, of course, find out some of them are not insured either, but to try to get those, you know, even, a lot of them are not repairable, even though some of them may be, but either way, to get them corrected. And it's a harder thing to do, we try, hopefully just get to the point, we got to deal with them the same way we're dealing with all these others. And, and I'll just say this to the people of Warren, we got more of this than we can almost deal with right now. We are trying, we are working every section of town, we've been trying to just kind of start going through the streets alphabetically and, you know, do what we need to do, but we get so many calls that come in from people that it just keeps stacking up on the stoop. We're actually making more progress than I know it feels like we're doing sometime, because we are, are getting some of them done, but, but even the grass moving, we've got people that won't keep the Rs moving. You know, this, this is, this is going to have to be dealt with one way or the other and I'm not trying to be threatened or anything like that, because I respect people private property, but now it's time to take care of some of these things. These things can't be left like they are, it's just a rot down, it should look like buildings on downtown. I mean, same situation, either got to be repaired or cleaned up and kept that way reasonably. I mean, I'm not talking about looking like a golf course, but, but I'm talking about, you know, reasonably kept, cut and moved, if it's a, if it's a vacant place, if it's not already, you know, grown up.
A reason why I brought that up, the citizens of Warren have spent a lot of money on that school system.
Yes, sir.
Over there and we have our first football game, August the 17th, it's earlier than normal, and I would just, if we promote our community, I would select, see all the people that come to our town on that main thoroughfare, not to see that light.
Well, I agree with you, only thing I would just say is we've got, the people that live in a lot of our neighborhoods deserve the same thing too.
Yeah.
To have their, their neighborhoods decent where they live, but you're, you're exactly right about that, I don't, Mr. Tollfree. All right, I could make a speech on this all night and I don't need, I know y'all will move on, so.
Just to let people know, I know a lot of people are calling and I'm getting bombarded, whether that's the grocery store or any other store, the property on West Pine Street owned by John Henry.
Everybody know what you're talking about.
The, I finally, I've been able to talk to the judge and the judge has named an executor of the estate of John Henry. I've got that last Thursday, which the state requires me to deal with the owners of the property and the reason the city hadn't been able to do anything is probably because there hadn't been anybody to deal with. Now, the judge lowered the, the amount of money that was put on the property and named an executor, and she asked me not to give a name out until they were notified, but I couldn't make them out, but then an executor had been named, so. Once she sends me the proper paperwork, I assure the citizens of Warren that we will take care of the problem on West Pine Street. But right now, we're still waiting and she promised me I would have something by Friday.
This coming Friday.
Yes, sir. And then out of proper procedure, when the letter goes out, I make contact with her, she still also has 20 days to get the property cleaned up, so, but we'll go from there.
It's an absolute legitimate problem. Don't have to argue about that at all, I promise you. Okay?
And also, while we're talking the Bryant Building, I know a lot of people are concerned about the Bryant Building, when it's going to get moved. Well, we've probably got the engineer reporting back on the church north of the Bryant Building, the old I McGee Building, if I remember, I would get, a lot of people don't remember that, but it came back structurally sound, there's a few items that they need to fix and they're willing to do so. The city gave them a 90-day to give us a plan, not to repair, but to give us a plan, turn it in as what code requires, a 90-day plan, and then a process on what took me how long it'll take for them to repair the building. It's nothing serious, but there's some stuff that needs to be taken care of. Now, getting back to the Bryant Building, I have to go through the ADQ to get the permit reactivated, okay, so we had to, we had to stop during the whole process because the church had a problem. And so they put me on hold at the, at the ADQ, so now I've, I've asked for another permit, or the permit to be reactiv, activated, I guess, just popular language, and I'm waiting on a date for them, but I'm also waiting on a date from the county judge that he'll be able to haul it off. Right now, he said he couldn't haul it off today if we had a permit because the landfill is too wet in July, it's too wet. That's kind of hard to believe, we've had a lot of rain, but so it's a little bit of, of working things out and getting everything put together and mapping out when everybody can be, coincide with each other and get this thing moved. My, my hope is to have it all gone by September 1st. Now, that's not a promise, that's a hope, so, but believe me, we are working on it and we're not just letting it, letting it stay there. And with the help of Mother Nature and the fire department in Warren, keeping water on it, which is required, has all been taken care of also, because of the asbestos, so. All those rules and regulations are still going on and we're still taking care of that.
What about right down the street?
That's, that's, the ones right here, that's a new problem. We had notified one set of owners with a letter, I talked to the other owner personally and we're, we're going forward with the progress on that. One set of owners have an insurance company to deal with and also wants to know what the right way is to deal with the problem, so we're, we're working on it, we just, just going to take a little bit of...
Are they planning to like redo the building?
They're, they're waiting on the, they're getting them inspected on what and how much, getting them the money, is it worth it, you pay them down? Is it worth it to tear them down, whatever? Uh, so we're all working closely together on that. And, so we're just, we're just sick and, and, uh, it's a, it's a problem.
That can cause a little bit of ice fries, probably shouldn't have, cause, uh, the roofs were, the apartment at least was not very good shape, but we had that heavy thunderstorm, I guess, fourth July with them. And there would have been a wind and it, it did a number of them. Unfortunately, those buildings aren't as big and tall and they're not structurally about to fall down at this point. Now, if they get left like they are, they probably would eventually, but.
We have a space in the city this week on both pieces of property, both owner properties.
Who are they taking stuff out?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, they're cleaning it up, trying to, trying to get out and, and it's leaving a, they're putting it in a dump, they're just leaving as fast as they're putting it in from our overnight guests that come in town to take it.
Another issue we'll discuss another day, but anyway, uh, but the, the, the one, the, the business, the Pro Nail, I believe it called, they are relocating, they're actively working. I went by there to, uh, 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 West Cypress Street. Uh, over there right next to the, to the Eagle Democrat, uh, where Marsha Berry, not too long ago, opened up a little store there, she of course moved. So they have already, they're moving in, I mean, they're already doing it. I happened to go by there this morning and they were actively working. Getting what they can salvage to, to put in there and then I think they had to order a few new things. And so they're, that business is not gonna cease to exist. I'm tickled about that, but, uh, okay. Uh, anything else? I don't wanna, I know we're taking a lot of time, but this is important stuff that council y'all need to know, the public needs to know. And, uh, uh, don't worry, we've got lots more cleanup projects to talk about as time goes on. It, I mean, it's just, we got a lot, but we're gonna try and we're working at it. Rob, anything else on sanitation, uh?
I'm a C D L driver short, we do have one opening, we have five or two. Trying to keep on hiring. The new equipment is working fantastic, uh, everybody's particularly dead with all the new stuff and, and is just doing a great job and the guys are, as usual, doing a wonderful job in, uh, hauling off the trash and picking up junk. Limbs have been a little slow, uh, we still got equipment following there. Street departments helped us a lot on limbs, of course, they have other things to do also. Uh, but, uh, everything else is running pretty smooth, I think. I know my phone's not ringing much, so I, that's what I go by, that's my handicap.
Uh, Mike just report, we still have limbs out there that the power company cut during their time in, in town. We staying in touch with them, you know, we get calls from people that that hasn't been, which is, you know, their responsibility to pick up. We have talked with them numerous times, they've been the utility company. Uh, you know, when are you gonna get this and, you know, certain locations? And, uh, well, we're working on it, we got other places, we got recruits running, things like that. We are trying.
We had a person at our last council.
Yes.
You wanna, you wanna tell us again about this, uh, partnership as it relates with the, uh, street department and your department, the, uh, home truck?
Let's listen on sanitation committee, if anybody wants to.
Oh, yes, ma'am, I didn't know that, I didn't know that.
Let's, we still just gotta get in, wait for the committee to talk.
Yeah, uh. The, street department and myself have talked about it. I believe that would be a great asset for the citizens of Warren in both departments. As far as us on junk and limbs and then the street department on storms and stuff after the fact. And I just believe with that, and it's a non-C D L truck, which means you do not have to have C D L license to operate, uh, which I believe we could, I mean, they offer training and everything, but it would require to be a trained operator. Uh, I, I just believe it would benefit the, uh, the citizens tremendously because of what all they can pick up on washing machines, the dryer, the couches, the limbs, the, and the landfill in town currently takes all of that that we can dispose of on, you know, here in the county. Uh, and plus it will save manpower and, and a lot of backs. And, uh, I, I just believe it would.
Name is Speedy.
Speedy, of course.
Get it picked up faster than what we're doing.
There are a lot of towns have them, most, most of the towns love them, I mean, they, uh, don't.
So there, you know of some towns?
Oh, yes, ma'am, Little Rock's got several, County's got one, El Grande's got a couple. Uh, I don't know about myself, uh, they're, they're, they're a very useful, useful tool. As you're looking at them, you can tell what all they, they can do. Uh, uh, and that's, like I said, that's a low profile truck. It's underweight, uh, it'd be a lot, but it won't add any more weight than garbage truck does to, to our city streets and, uh, you won't have to have C D L to operate, so.
One, one other benefit of it, and we're not packing on this tonight, I know, but just one other benefit of it. Obviously, we've got lots of narrow streets, y'all all know that, certain, certain parts of town. And this would be a lot easier to handle in those kind of neighborhoods to pick a lot of stuff up that it's pretty hard to get in there with, with anything larger. You know, before, but that's, that's one of the things we were looking at, so.
And just to let you know on a, on a other note, if you, this is just, this is information on it. If you ordered it tonight, and I know we're not talking about that, but I'm just giving you an idea. If you ordered it tonight, it would be at least six months. So, you can just go forward with that on whether how long you, if you ever decide to, then it will be about six months down the road from.
Y'all already experienced that with police cars and garbage trucks and everything else. It's just the way it's, it is right now. All right, we need to move along. Do you have any other comment or question?
No, I just knew that the chip person was not here and she was probably wanting to refer to him to explain.
And, and the solid waste plan that's listed there on the committee, that's a ongoing thing that we're gonna be talking about. I've already, I think, briefed y'all in the past, or at least the committee, uh, that we're looking down the road at our disposal of solid waste. Y'all know right now, again, the public and everybody, all the garbage, the household garbage that we pick up in Warren, two times a week at every residence, sometime every day at businesses, goes into a transfer station out here on the, uh, west side of Warren. We compact it in the big trailers and it's picked up by a company, a private company that owns a landfill in Union County. And the cost goes up and up and up per ton. And this is not just here, it's all over the state and all over the country. We're spending an awful lot of money on that, but we have no choice. We, and, and if you can't afford to build a landfill, you don't want to build a landfill. We'll, sometime we'll have to redo our transfer station unless we come up with a different solution. The different solution that we're hoping for down the road is the new waste and energy facility that is supposed to get built over around Lake Village. Which means you can haul everything over there, everything. And it's about half price, not counting transportation, which we'll have to, you know, handle that issue. You don't have to compact it, you don't have to do nothing, you just carry it over there and dump it. But that hasn't been constructed yet, it's just in the, you know, the planning phase. That is the best looking thing we've seen on paper for the future. But we're just not there yet, so just want to keep the council involved and aware of what's going on. If we can find a better solution than that, that's fine too. But we, garbage has got to be one of the more expensive issues of city government. And again, it's not just Warren, I promise you, it's everywhere. Anything else for Rob or sanitation committee? Building official, move as quickly as you can.
We've got a few buildings, we're gonna have to reach you in the month of June. Uh, we've got quite a few little projects going on in the city, uh, which is a good thing. Uh, we got the remodeling of the, uh, Union Bank up here, they have Super Value, which is going to be a government business, U S D eight, uh, remodeled it to their specs. There's a couple of remodels and garages and, uh, additions, additions at home that have been added, uh, in June. Uh, and a few plumbing projects going on that require a plug-in. Other than that, just normal business going on.
Any?
No, uh, no, uh, we had no, uh, planning commission meeting or anything this, the month of June.
I think there is more than playing, I don't know.
One scheduled Thursday.
Okay? Any questions on building official? There's a number of things going on. Some good, some not so good, but there's just a lot of things going on. Of course, construction and what have you, most of the construction is all good, but. All right, and no other questions, let's go to the, uh, you don't have any properties that we need to act on this for?
Not, not really, no.
Street foreman, Mr. Hernsberger, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, pretty much business as usual. We are taking neighborhoods or certain streets out of each neighborhood, uh, going to complete, get cleaned out, uh, getting with the, working with fire departments to try to blow the, the covers that are, feel good, trying to blow those out, uh, for water, get water flow. Uh, just seeing what we do, what we got to do with. We did, uh, uh, purchase a new truck last, uh, after last meeting. It, uh, has to go to the shop in the morning, but.
Explain you, Matt.
It has a update that needs to be done, they dropped a, uh, I loaded the truck on Tuesday, uh, myself and Rob, uh, went Thursday, picked it up and I had to boost it off almost every morning.
Some of the orders don't work.
It's all on the morning, but it's an update that they did not do, a software update in the truck that they did not do. So the lights on the dash, they run the batteries down, they don't want to go off.
All under shade comments are out.
And you have to boost it off during the day?
No. Just, just one time in the morning, uh, whenever it's not, it doesn't run. But, uh, everything going our way.
See if we got any questions for you on anything. Council members, questions?
I got it. So you are familiar with this, okay, and you are wanting to go into partnership?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, Ms. Tofrey.
Yes, after we clean the dirt out of the ditches, do we go back and monitor the flow of the ditches after we clean it up?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna make sure it's flowing properly. We've, uh, been fortunate that after we clean the ditches here lately, we had floods and you can see how, how the water is going.
Any else, question for the street foreman? Not trying to rush y'all, but I'm trying to pick things up a little bit here, we've been a while and I see heads not, and so. Okay, uh, street committee, Alderman Mosley. Uh, you've got, just for your information in your packet there, you should have, you know, we've been talking about, uh, some streets that need no parking signs to stop people from parking on them. What you've got is a, just a, a short list of some streets that the street department is recommending you look at. That's not anything you gotta act on tonight, which there may be certainly some others and, uh, that you want to look at or maybe those you don't think so. Uh, that's been, been tabled for some time, but anyway, I just wanted to give you all that so you at least have that information. And now, back to you on the bidding.
Okay, I, I have a list of streets for bidding and, um, I want to do, we could be out to bid. And the shirts are, they'll be the best of the.
Read them out.
Okay. On Lynn Street.
This is in Ward one.
Ward one is Lynn Street, Park, Hickory to Tate and Step Street. Ward two is Maple, Bailey and on Seager Street, Galloway, down past Marty Plankham's driveway and I, I can't remember if that's marked on the street.
Does he get a new bidding street from his house?
Yeah.
I'm just picking at it.
But it needs it. Ward three, John C Moss from Central to Sturgis.
And then Packer and Seminary.
Packer and Seminary.
You, you handled their bus depot.
Yeah, I know, but then I didn't go back and do that yet. The bus depot intersection from Packer to Seminary.
Seminary.
Yes, Seminary.
Now, for everybody, this is the school bus depot, the public school, where they keep all their buses, is what we're talking about.
That's a, it's a pretty good sized section for a day.
So, so your motion.
My motion.
Motion and a second spin made is to bid, take, take the estimated tonnage of all of this and bid them out. All right, that's the motion.
He's saying it.
Yeah, I got that, I'm just seeing if anybody's got any comment or any, any question on the, on the vote. All right, all in favor, show of hands. I see four in favor. But we'll, we'll get that going, okay? Thank you, I know street committee's done a lot of looking and work and what have you and a lot more stuff needs to be done, but we, we understand that, so. Okay, community economic development committee, uh, council member Marshall?
Yes, we had a meeting to kick off our first community and economic citizen advisory meeting. And we have it here and it was a good turnout and I'm gonna go through the names that has been recommended by each council person. I, myself, Alderman Marshall recommended Beverly Marshall and Dexter Campbell. Alderman Tofrey, Nora Pacheco and Billy Joe Harding. Alderman Bert Frazier, Emily Groves and Paxey Player. Alderman Mosley, Jane Harris and Janelle Lipton. Alderman Henderson, Mayor Beth Frazier, Everett Wallace. Alderman Atkins, Arlaud Allen and Chris Osborne and our mayor Gregory recommended Randall, Randall Rayden. And I went over, the purpose of the meeting was to get extra help from the citizens of Warren, um, to kind of give an insight and go to the city council. And it was also noted to let individuals know that they do not have authority over the city council. That's one of the decision-making, just extra avenues, different ways to help us improve our city in the different wards and different zones. We have our sanitation department, we have the police department, as well as street department that goes in the different areas and this is extra eyes and ears to help us in that. It was a very good meeting and everyone who came to the meeting was very excited about it and we're gonna move forward with the next meeting date. Once I get with Alderman Henderson, as well as Alderman Frazier, we can come and set a date on that.
Okay, I, I think you need to, the council needs to vote.
To vote, I'm sorry.
Upon all these people. And also, when you do that, or she do it two different pieces, but also there's a procedure or rules that it will follow. Now, are y'all ready to do anything on that? I'm asking.
Yes.
Okay, well, you want to make a motion first of all to approve the committee?
I'm sorry, I'm moving ahead.
That's all right, that's all right, go ahead.
I made a motion to the city council to approve, we have the information in the packet.
Okay, you're talking about the whole thing?
The whole thing.
Okay.
This is something that we started before COVID. COVID hit, we had one meeting and the prior committees.
Motion and, excuse me, motion and set, okay. Now, again, everybody understand, this is not a, uh, authorized board or commission like the planning commission or the aviation commission. And, and the rules then are spelled out how long they stay on here. They're basically, your appointments are kind of there for your term, to watch them out, so. So, any questions or discussion? All in favor, show of hands? I see four in favor, thank you. What else, uh? Now, we, we got, we got the bids in there on the, the roof at the city park. We got two proposed.
We have two proposed bids for the old street department building. We have one that was submitted for seventeen thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty cents from Shannon Gorman G Hold LLC. We have a second bid that was submitted from Simmons and Son, um, for twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars.
And this, and let me make clear, these bids are to put pitched roofs on, not just replace a flat roof.
And to add your trust to it, to give it more support.
I made a motion to accept a lower bid.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion? This is only the roof, this don't include anything else that we may, still may have to do to the building, just the roof.
And what fund are you referencing that the dollars come from?
When you get down with the government.
That's appropriate.
That's appropriate.
We should do it. Is that part of your motion?
That's my motion.
Or, do everybody make a motion, second?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any, any questions or discussion on the motion? All in favor, show of hands. I see four in favor, so that's the bid. Okay, thank you, uh, Aldman Marshall, I think that covers everything. Ways and Means, Aldman Henderson.
The Ways and Means committee did ask for a committee, uh, as a whole to, uh, hear a second presentation as it relates the, uh, SOLA. And there was really no additional updates other than direct, the option of direct, uh, pay. We will be asking when it's convenient, uh, for all of us, because we're talking possibly a twenty-year, uh, plan, thirty-year plan, or twenty-year, or however many, but it will be a long-term that we really would like to have all council members at the table so that we will hear the same information and move forward, uh, as to what would be best for the, for the citizens. We don't, we talked about maybe, uh, prior to a city council meeting, our council meeting is at five thirty, maybe have it at five o'clock. Uh, we even looked at the option, uh, an agenda meeting, but we will work at the pleasure of the council and, uh, invite the parties back. But we do feel that it's important that all of us be at the table, and not just the committee, and have it as a committee, council committee as a whole.
Yes.
While they do the municipal meeting, I talked to several towns that has already went through the process, and it seems to be the consensus that they had to do it all over, they'd rather own it.
Than a wreck.
Direct.
Yeah.
Than to go through the other side, because you still have to do all the other things, no matter what, so it'd be more feasible if we owned it.
And there is a warranty that, uh, he stated that would go along with that. But, but again, uh, we just feel, our community feels that we want everyone here so that we're hearing the same message, and that, uh, we make a decision that's gonna be best for the citizens. But we want to explore our idea of looking at other different companies besides that one?
Uh, already heard from one of those, just that, which in matter of fact, I had sent them the information they asked for, so they could just make a proposal, I could do. So, y'all could have something to prepare.
I think there's a couple of other companies out there, out there as well.
That, that is, that is an option, but I-
And then the next step would be, you know, getting legal involved, uh, with them. And that's, that's all that I-
All right, thank you ma'am. And American Rescue Fund is something we'll be talking about for some time, but the rest of the year, I'm sure.
We have the twenty twenty-four, we get those dollars spent, and we could spend them in a few minutes.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Okay, uh, reports and board, uh, business, boards and commissions. Parks and Recreation Commission, uh, I think Kyle got tied up even at the swimming pool tonight, because he was having to cover some things for memory, because she's Aldman Fraser, she's out of, of pocket. Uh, but you do have a report from him there. Uh, is there anything that we need to answer any questions or get you any information on? And then I am, uh, should have a copy somewhere in your folder there of a resume, Mark Denon Cuperson. I am nominating him for a term on the Parks and Recreation Commission.
I know that we approved the nomination coming from the mayor.
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any question or discussion? All those in favor, show of hands. I see four in favor, thank y'all. All right, planning commission, uh, they have a meeting coming up, but they ain't nothing to report tonight, same for aviation. Uh, next page, the Water and Sewer Commission, you've got their minutes of their, uh, meeting of May the nineteenth, and you've got their complete financial for the month for that time period. All there for your information. Housing Authority, we do not have any report, uh, since our last meeting. Cultural Center, you've got the monthly report there, just showing, uh, the expenses for the month of June.
Any updates, mayor?
Uh, yeah, I got a bill from the architect, what they've already been looking at. We are, there's two things we're waiting on, on doing. Uh, number one is we, we want to run the water sewer camera through the sewer pipe, trying to determine if we've got any kind of under-the-foundation sewer, uh, leaks that could be causing some of our problems. And number two, they want us to dig a, outside of the building, dig a hole right down by the front, I guess it'd be the southwest corner of the building, to try to get a little better look at the foundation before they give us a final report. And I'm trying to get that scheduled, this. But everything else has been going on, it's been hard to get those two things done, but we are working, and we'll be able to do those things ourselves in-house. We don't have to hire anybody, we just got to get out there and do it. And try to bring y'all something back that you can start seriously looking at.
And we, we talk to Patricia?
Every, almost every day. We're looking, looking for money.
He was popular at the municipal meeting.
He was.
If anybody out there wishes to leave their estate to the Cultural Center, we'd be glad to take some money, but we, we're gonna need a good bet to try to repair that building, but we think it's worth repairing.
Most definitely.
And we're gonna try to, try to get that done. Uh, okay, where am I now?
Unfinished.
Unfinished, nothing's-
Got a question.
Yes, sir.
On the application for the, uh, grant for the swimming pool.
Yes, sir, it's in the works to be finished and submitted.
Because I, I, I managed, it was a buzz at the municipal meeting about all the smaller cities being able to be eligible for that one.
Yeah, yeah, that's making the competition a whole lot tougher.
Yes, they are.
We, we, we're applying, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Want to know who-
Matter of fact, we've done everything on our end, and the municipal, uh, the Melville District again is, is helping us put that together, and we are submitting an application, yes. Plus, we're looking at some other, other funding.
And I thought we were gonna do both of those, too?
Uh, we, we go ahead and just submitted, they told us our chances of getting fun grant is probably nonexistent. Too much little towns playing for all of it. And if we really wanted to get one, our best shot was the fifty-fifty, so that's why we-
You're talking about the blue and you, blue and you.
We're still pursuing that, yes ma'am.
Okay, so it is still there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was talking about the, the state fund, yes, yes. So, we might go quit on that. Okay, no unfinished business, no new business. We didn't have any announcements tonight. Do y'all know who we think we've been paying?
That we paid this.
Well, other than, since, uh, the legislation has took over the school, we starting school, a whole lot of learners, and we are starting, and the first football game will be August the seventeenth, when it's usually Labor Day weekend. So, if y'all know anything, if you know anything else, the traffic is gonna pick up substantially this year because we moved the elementary school to a few of. Need to get to work, you may need to make an alternate route.
Uh, I have it.
August the twentieth.
Mm-hmm. All for him, I'm sorry.
When does it normally start?
Last, tomorrow.
I'm sorry.
You were making a motion, I think you-
Oh, so, I could be-
Second, second.
Is there, is there a second?
Second, oh, yeah.
Second, second, okay, all in favor, second. Let me have us both, all in favor, everybody, bill, show of hands. And the next meeting will be August the fourteenth, just the meeting the tenth. And I gotta motion to do yard.
Second.
And second, all in favor, show of hands. Anybody, oh, four in favor. Thank y'all.